Craig switcher is on.
I'm just gonna tap it off.
Craig, can you hear us?
Unless he's frozen.
He looks like he's frozen. Okay, Craig, can you hear us?
Can.
Okay. Bob, can you hear us okay?
Yeah, loud and clear. Thank you.
Well, it's 7:00 so somebody called me. It's June 42nd, special meeting, 1.1 special meeting. Thank you.
The United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God in justice.
Steve, Danny.
Here.
Chipbath.
Here.
Shane Davis.
Here.
Robert Jones.
I'm here.
Horace Stacks here.
We'll go to Rodoff into new business. I'm gonna give this to Jeff, okay? Okay, there's a lot of little things that.
Sure, I guess. Earlier this year, the state legislature passed a series of ordinance is concerning ongoing opioid litigation throughout the country in which the town of Pendleton is part of. Only a couple of you were on the council at the time this was started, it's back, I believe, in 2018. And the town Pendleton, along with many other municipalities throughout the country sued Purdue Pharmaceuticals along with some other companies that sold opioids based on expense to the city, increased public safety, health, things of that nature. And all those cases were consolidated to a massive lax action sued in federal court by. Earlier this year, the state legislature has said pass 416, 4615, which effectively said that although unless a local government opts out of a of this statute, then Indiana will effectively negotiate for all the local governments. And the local governments will be paid according to a schedule that I, you can read in the ordinance or the statute that I sent you earlier today. Really becomes 15% of local governments, where the state requires based on population and population alone, not on damage. There's definitely a difference from what certain municipalities suffered. It's not just based on population. The town entered into a contract with Cohen and the law to do this litigation back in 2018. They're taking us on a contingency basis. The town has no out-of-pocket expenses. These guys have been great to work with. I, although I wasn't the attorney with Pendleton, the case with Cohen. Madison County was when I was a Madison County attorney back in 18, I assisted Elwood and Alexandria, who I both represent. So I've got a real good relationship with these guys. They're straight shooters. They've recommended that we do opt out, that all municipal clients in Indiana drop out. But first off, it's no risk. It turns out we won't back in. Let's say the state settles tomorrow after we opt out today for any gazillion dollars. Well, oh boy, we sure messed up there. We can get right back in within two months of today. So there's no risk if we opt out today. And these attorneys, although, you know, they're motivated by money, of course. An attorney would be motivated by money. It's in there. They're all in the same direction we are. If we get more money, they get more money. And so they've made this recommendation. They're adamant about it. I'm convinced of it, that it's the right move. But I'll try to answer any questions. But I think it's a no-risk move at this point to opt out. We send a resolution to the state by the end of this month. And then we sit and watch for a couple of months and see what happens.
The way I understand it, if you correct me, when you said on the contingency. If we opt, if we opt out and it's settled, their fees, I guess is the right word, comes out of the settlement. There's nothing for us to lose.
No, not at this point, because you can always, if it turns out to be a mistake in 30 days, we can get right back in. And I, from what I understand, that settlement is imminent. Now, imminent, most people who live in the 21st century think imminent is tomorrow and law, that could mean several months. But I, I think by the end of this year, we'll have a settlement. One of the things too, is this, if we do not opt out, we are foreclosed on suing any additional opioid cases. There's some thought that possibly there could be suits brought against pharmacies, the large box pharmacies, and Johnson and Johnson as well. Could you say that again? I'm sorry. We do or don't opt out. If we do not opt out, if we stay under the state umbrella, we are precluded from suing as the town of Pendleton. These other edits. Now, I would imagine, I would guess, that if the state engages in that lawsuit, we'd be taken care of to some degree there. But it would be out of our, we wouldn't be driving the bus. We would be passengers. So this, this would allow us to keep our independence, I suppose. I mean, these, our lawyers are representing, I believe, 37 different Indiana municipalities. But they've, in my experience, are treating us all like we're the only one. But get back with me really, really quickly. Any of you would like to talk to them, they could board.
I think that's the most, I told you. They're representing 37 other municipalities. And there's like a total of 70 plus in the state of Indiana.
I think that's accurate.
Yeah. And some of the towns, municipalities have, and I've been trying to follow this since Jeff said this about the state statute was added back in April. That's already opted out. I guess what I'm trying to say is what Jeff told, just said to us exactly what I've written. You know, we've got nothing to lose, and you've got 60 million to come back into. If they settle tomorrow, and we say it could be $100 or say $50, then we will get down to $50. Any questions?
Yeah, I'm like you said, if memory serves me right, when we were talking about this back in 2018, you and I were there, of course, at that point in time. I think it was, you know, kind of roll the dice whether we collect anything, for lack of better words, on this, on the suit or not. But I think it would make sense to opt out, as you're talking about, and Jeff are referencing on that. It would make sense to, I would think, to opt out of that, let the state lead on that. And if there was some kind of a settlement, then we would get some, we would be, get some reference to that. So I think it makes sense to proceed in that fashion.
If we opt out, and then the state settles, and we opt back in, why do we owe these people? With Cohen and the law? Or we already paid that money?
They get it off the top.
Okay.
Yeah. Purely contingency. No, no chance of out-of-pocket.
Got it.
Jeff, do we know what that, what that, I know we went to the dollar now, but is it a percentage or how does that? Or if it collects, you know, a billion dollars, for example, do they get a percentage of the, the award?
They get a percentage of the award off the very top, but then it's distributed to their clients.
Okay, but we know what that percentage would be at this point?
No, I think that, Bob, I think that's being negotiated actually as part of the settlement. But attorney fees will be a big, big chunk of this because.
Oh yeah, yeah, it would be.
They've done all this work against all these guys forever with no, no pay, no guarantee of actually getting any money. So.
Right.
Bob, I don't have a good answer to that. I don't know.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
And that one of it is it's money we, without their help, we've never received anywhere. So it's, 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 it's money that we're gonna get, and the town didn't have to do really much of anything with. If they get a settlement. I think the only thing the town's had to do, if you're like my other clients, is to answer a few discovery requests, which took minimal amount of time.
Do they have a comment or question? Anybody online? Got questions? Great, okay. I guess I'm gonna call for a motion for, and this is a resolution, so. And this has to be done by June 30th or 41st, or part of the special meeting. But I'll call for a motion for resolution 21-05. Opioid opt-out resolution. So, one second. I've got a motion in the circuit for resolution 21-05.
Steve Denny.
Hi.
Chipbath.
Hi.
Shane Davis.
Hi.
Robert Jones.
Hi.
Horace Stacks.
Hi.
Start on that 52. All we gotta do is.
You decide, and I'll get it certified by Willie tomorrow, and then we'll get it off to Cohen and the law, it'll distribute to the state agencies if necessary. And it'll be done.
Okay, good. Next one is on the new business road impact fee, zone improvement plan discussion.
What you, sure, and I, gentleman next to me is gonna be helping me out plenty on this one. What you have in front of you is what you ordered, I believe, at the beginning of 2020, is the banning report on road impact fees. And this is the start of the, which could get, come together very quickly. This is the document which your, the amount of your impact fees are gonna be based. And you could see the numbers there on the roadway impact cost over the next 10 years to be nearly $21 million, 20.7 million. There's the road impact fee of 93195. Summary, in the first 21 or so pages after that, it's how these engineers came up with these numbers. To make an impact fee effective, what has to happen is this is exactly like a zoning change. It has to go in front of, because you're changing your planning code. It first goes in front of the plant commission for a public here, 10 days' notice. Everyone that shows up that doesn't have repetitive comments, it's allowed to speak, ask questions, things of that nature. That'll be an excellent opportunity. Probably want to have an engineering representative at that meeting to answer the technical questions. And then probably a reading representative there to answer financial questions. But at that point, that the plant commission will give a recommendation to this body, whether or not this thing should pass. And then we will come together with this body at your next regular meeting as the current schedule. And you will vote to either pass it or, or not. Only requires one meet, one reading on a zoning change, similar to this one. You just have to pass it once, because it's considered, it was, I think it was Kayla who said that it was the best, your first reading isn't planned admission. Your second reading will be at the council, so you're already at second reading. I, I sent an email out earlier, if you noticed, 6.0 and 6.1, talk about the calculations and where you may have some leeway on the play with the numbers. 6.1 really gets into, or talks about increase costs, all costs, this very last paragraph on page 22. All costs listed reporter 2020 costs. Recommend town council consider added inflation factor three to five percent for trip per year to the road impact fee ordinance. That's something that we could certainly talk more to banning about. But that is gonna be a decision that both ultimately you, but the plant commission will have to make whether to put that in there. Also, things like talks about matching funds we use for three of the projects. Takes things down from $931 to $694 a trip. And then there's so many trips were informed. And you can see the numbers there. You can read that as well as I can. But ultimately that, not today, but ultimately that's gonna be the, the job of this body, the duty of this body, is to whether or not we want to adjust those impact fees. I don't see necessarily a a recommendation for banning on that, so I think that's gonna be more of a not moving, but major tell it to give us some guidance on that, what, what their thoughts are. But that's the process. And then once you've adopted an ordinance, an impact fee ordinance, it takes, in fact, six months from the date you pass it. So if we pass it on July 8th, January 8th, it's good. If we're eighth of next year.
So that really, this is back at my old reset.
Yeah, yeah, you're, you're, you're right there. You're off by a week. So. Everybody will get it. I'll turn it over to the more learned gentleman, if I'm right. So if you want to, I can go over the, the plan. There's the second set of handouts you have is the slides. If you go over the slide with. There will have a slide. Yeah. So so while she's getting that, let me so, so what's gonna happen, once we take this? The numbers that you're gonna see for the last page, the recommended four roads, not for the park, this is just the road. Is, we'll get that to you in a second. But basically, for the roads, for development would be, the fee would be $8,797. That's what Vanning came up with. Now, that's, Vicutelli's looking at it now. They're gonna go over Vanning's work, and they probably would have some minor adjustments. But that magnitude will basically stay the same. It may go up a little bit, and may go down a little bit. But it's gonna generally be in that range. So what I want to talk about is how did we get to that number? And what's the process that Indiana law requires? So I'll go ahead and start. So the first thing that Vanning did is they did a traffic study, and they modeled it for what our current conditions are. Okay? We had one failing intersection that we've sort of taken care of in a way, but it's 67 in last map, it was a N. All right? And they looked at 36 other intersections to see where they're at. And if, when you get your handout, it's page four, you can see that most of it's green. The two white ones are just what was under construction at the time. It could be.
It's this.
Yeah, it is there. What page was that?
It's 11 of 180.
Okay. So what is.
It's right under item 3.1.
Okay, we'll work on it. So there's, there's our Madison Avenue, but you know, we've got that temporarily closed. All right? Then what they did, turn to page 13. They looked at they looked at 10 years from now, and they looked at the 10, 12, most 14, 14 most likely areas that'll develop first. And then knowing the acreage, then that would come up with a number of single or multifamily residences. All right? So now they're gonna project what that growth is gonna be. And that roughly came out to 5,000 more people. I think we're gonna grow faster than that, it was a cycle. But basically, the town population doubles, because we're 4,500, you know, now we're 5,000, but it's just a area below 10,000 people. So the population doubles. All right? Then they took that model, and they said, now what if all these developments are generating traffic? And that's what they mean by trips. And then where are we gonna have failed intersections for that? So that is on page 15. And the pages before that talk about those 14 locations. How many trips are added, daily trips, if you look at the top, roughly 22,300. So then they look at, okay, with the double in population, where are we gonna have failing intersections? So on page 15, if you look, Fall Creek at State Street, 67 at Pendleton Avenue, Main Street at State Street, which is that stoplight, Pendleton Avenue and State Street, which is this stoplight, 67 at Madison Avenue, of course, 67 at State Road 38, 67 at Water Street, which by the way is the next worst intersection. Right now. And then 300 West, 36. Okay? So from that, they said, okay, we have to identify projects that will solve those problems. And as soon as you identify projects, you're able to put a dollar amount to that. And that's at almost 21 million we can draw up. That's what it would cost to fix, get everything in place, so we can go back to an acceptable level. Which it shows on like on 17, they ran the model, get those projects rid there. So then they ran the model, and then you look on page 17, there's only one place where we're still in trouble, and that's right there. And this is a side note, the decision we made is to model this as if we didn't take the parking away. We assumed we kept the parking downtown on the street. And the model would be different, and you did run, I think, you did run it several times with parking removed, so that we would have turn lanes and things like that. So we had to make a decision. I said, no. I said, right now, people don't want parking taken out. Let's just assume, let's try and see what happens if we keep the parking. Because my rule number one always is save the downtown, right? So and then, and keep the downtown business as bio. Okay? So the projects that were identified, and I think it's best if we turn to the handouts. If you just proceed, and we'll start with project number one. On page seven. So I've been thinking about traffic in Pendleton for 15 years, back when I was the town engineer for a while, or when Dad was town manager. And I think I've told you some story. We hired the best traffic engineer in the state, Mr. Fairbach. He was my dad's generation. He was an engineer's engineer. You had a problem, you went to him. He lived in our town and says, I could solve your traffic problems, but I'll kill you downtown. He said, I don't know how to solve the traffic. Well, I think by luck, not by desire, so brilliant, by hearing it like. It's sort of, the solution just sort of percolated over the years. What it is, is we're lucky in a way, we have a terrible configuration. You've got 69, you've got the Forum Tour, you've got Falkers, you've got 67. You've got all these constrictions, and everything funnels downtown. So what Joe Miller and I work with is that as you come into town, when it's a traffic jam, you can make the decision to peel north or south, get out of the traffic jam. When it's not rush hour, your better option is still to go through town, which is very important for, for the downtown. Because 99% of the cities and towns have built bypasses till their downtown. Because the bypass rush hour or non-rush hour, they stand by pass. Because of low classing. Right? So the way the, the strategy here is, they hit Heritage Way, and we connect Heritage Way, take it north, or we take it south. So project one would be to take Heritage Way south, down to Fall Creek Drive. Okay? And then it's not complete yet, but cars could then go back towards the, the west, right? Effectually, we'll take Heritage Way south and connect that, take it over Fall Creek, connect it to either 67 through and take it through north of the golf course, or south of the golf course, right along the Forum Tour. Or something on the other side of the Forum Tour. That way, traffic could either, would either come in, hit Pendleton and peel off south. And then and then another project, we'll come up here, a second project. Project five, so go off to project nine. So if you live in the north town, part of town, you would peel off Heritage Way, go to the north, hit 132, and come down south. Or when we get connected up to 600 south, let's say you're going to Carrick Lane. You would take that, hit 600 south, and go into Carrick Lane instead of coming through the town, turning left here and head up. Okay? So that's project five. Project six on that page is the, is the connection where I talked about, where we take Heritage Way south, after it's connected to the Falker Drive, and then connected to to Pendleton Avenue or State Road 67. So let's go back to seven. So that's project one, five, I wish you would've made it projects one and two. Project two is to do a roundabout at 300 West and US 36. That would be roughly 1.3 million. All right? Now, there's other options. We picked one, because other options roughly the same dollar amount. We've gotta come to to a dollar amount. So that's the project, that's the solution we came up with, put a dollar amount to. Project three would be a roundabout at North Pendleton Avenue and State Road 67. Personally, I think that project, when it really gets engineered, that roundabout slide down south a little bit, so that we have an easier way in the Pendleton. Our group. Then project four, was that? Project four is actually what we're sort of in the middle of. That's the 67, and that is taking 67, adding a lane, so it would be four lanes coming through that area of Pendleton, through Pendleton. We're gonna the Pendleton add-ons would add on 3.5 million. And then actually, our actual cost will be 20% of 80 points, maybe 20 split. So worst case is we get stuck with 100% of it. Best case is we get stuck with a bill of 70, 700,000. That's to do, improve the traffic flow. That's to do, improve the traffic flow from the angle road up to Huntsville. I talked about five, project six, which he didn't, what I talked about earlier is, we actually take away the parking spots, make some. Changes what we do downtown, I didn't want to show that, because there's just not political enthusiasm for that right now. So if we now jump to 11, page 11, on the hand, on the new handback. So all those projects add up to 21 million, divided by the number of trips generated by the increase in the population. And then to pay for that would be an impact fee of four roads, not parks, but the roads. $8,797. So, so tell me if I'm right, Jeff, so. For the roads, let's say Baker Tilly comes back, tweets it, make this example easy, he comes back and says it's $8,800. 8,800, he likes that too. $8,800 or less, right? Yes, it does, but you have a hard time going beyond that.
You have to redo it.
You have to redo it, because there would be adjustments.
All of this, so yeah, we're, this is. Outside of the potential adjustments at 6.1, this is, this is the ceiling.
I want to say in 13 years I've been up here, this is probably one of the best. Reports or studies. Parking, traffic flows, or living problems, and I bet we. This, this gives a lot of options for dollar values. Scott and Caitlin. Put a lot of time in there for them on this with the banning. Baker Tilly, with two other groups. Of traffic studies and so forth, but there's a lot of good information that they studied, and. You know. There's still a long way to go. But. The timeline that I keep talking about, Scott and Caitlin, I talk about, about January the 1st, because of our growth. It's important we get this done, but we get it done right. And I spent some more time today, spent with Caitlin and Scott, looking at. Different things in this report, that I don't see, and I don't want to throw anybody a bus, I don't want any answers, okay? I really don't, but we need to make sure for the planning department. When we have this meeting that we scheduled today for planning on July the 7th, before our meeting on July 8th. And it's things that we talked about. More with Caitlin than I did with Scott, but. Make sure that we got a clearer definition of the subdivision in our ordinance or ours, whatever it takes. So if someone asks, what is the definition of a subdivision? And then another part is drainage lots. If I go out and buy some acreage, and I build four different lots, or plan four different lots, how does that affect? I just want to make sure it's spelled out, before we have another two-hour meeting with planning, and then the next night, with the council, trying to figure all this stuff out. Well, another question I got is on commercial lots, and. Is it based on like a warehouse, square footage, is, is that what comes up? Is it figured with truck traffic versus car traffic? What I mean there, to put a warehouse in, that's gonna be, let's take. Well, let's take the cold story building out there, that's a lot of truck traffic. There really isn't that many employees that drive there every day. So you, your truck traffic could be more than your car traffic. That's gotta be part of the study, numbers, I think, I'm not saying I'm right, okay? Them things that we talk, I just want to make sure with our group, because we can't make any decisions, actually, because it's gotta go through the planning department first. But to, to make it common to everybody, the planning department's information on that July 7th meeting, when they've got a. Something that's got the interest, that's, that's gonna be in this report, okay?
So.
If we're wrong, don't worry.
No, I just want to make sure I understand, so tonight, you don't want to discuss it, but you want us to come up. With a proposal, for instance, when does something become a subdivision, when it's four or more like we do on the system development fees?
What is the definition of subdivision?
Definition, I think, in Indiana, in the Indiana code for impact fees, it's development, we just need to clearly define that in.
Our definition?
Yes.
Right, so if that's, for example, following the, what we did for system development fees, we said four or less. Won't have a system, so. We could say consistent, say it's not really a subdivision. A big lot, just outside of town, it's got enough divided before, that would count. It wouldn't be, the impact fee would not be imposed, but if it was five or six.
As long as we got definitions of that, and wrote down in this report, so it's not.
So there's no question.
There's no question.
Right, system, right, that, that's all I'm trying to say, right? Because that's what's gotten us in trouble in the past, but I just want it to be consistent, and everybody's got the same fees or no, everybody doesn't have the fees.
Jeff, there aren't any rules about what we have to define in the ordinance as the development that would bring impact fees into play? That's up to the county commission and town council?
Yeah, that's absolutely, you've got that stuff. So.
So if you bring in the impact fees, that most of us. To me, that's part of the negotiation tools that should be used, okay? But I mean, that's what I look at, especially on the commercial side, and payments, okay? And it, that's, it's a negotiating thing that you can say, okay, we'll take this down to half on the impact fees, we're not gonna give you the payment. We'll give you the payment, you're gonna pay. It's just a tool, I think, we can use. Other towns that I've talked to have done this, and, you know, we wanna. Compare, and I don't like to do that, some towns west of us here. Have put on tremendous dollar values on impact fees. Did not stop growth. I guess that's what we're trying to say, it did not stop growth, and they want to know how they can stop growth, because it's growing too fast. More touring that we put in place, and a lot of verbiage. Well, just to point a lot of that.
Yeah, so if I could, on commercial, if you turn to page 11. Says. $131 per trip, dollar amount, so for a commercial would be just. I can think of doing it, just look at whatever that commercial development is, and look at what, how many trips it develops a day, and that would be the impact. That's right, so we could do it by formula, not by fly rate. Yeah, because we wouldn't know, we couldn't know, prospective projects are just guessing, so that's what we have, per trip rate. So I, I think that's what we would do, and then. Make sure I'm saying this right, we can look at this every five years, and regenerate it, and do it again, and that data, and then, yep. I've looked at some of the town sports today, and they, they're getting into it every five years, and. Yeah, because we could be year four, because we're gonna go up 30% in the next two years. We could be a year four or five, and we're already approaching that 5,000 increase, and we're like, whoa, whoa, this is what we do now. And then also, it's important to know that. Projects identified can be changed, as long as they meet the same purpose. Instead of a roundabout. Instead of, what is the criteria that we have at 67?
Well, it could be instead of a roundabout, you could install a T intersection.
Yeah, just a T intersection, you know. Fancy left, right, and turn lane, all that stuff. So it doesn't have to be a roundabout, just as a proposal. We could change that, as long as it serves the same need. Solves the same problem, it's a project fee I have in mind. We're gonna hear more and more, I think. One half, it's, it's here. Right, and then so, just like, another example is, it's gonna be that 67 happens, let's say it happens in 2024. That's gonna be, all of a sudden, traffic patterns are gonna change. May want to run the model again, because now it's all different. There's a new reality to deal with, and then we would update this.
That's true, like Scott and I, so that would look at this, 67, I said, well, if we do that, then people won't be cut through.
Right.
You know, each central way to get to Water Street, and, yeah, so they could come back to the right. We're just trying to look at all that, yeah. Any other comments or questions? I could say, look, this is just a discussion.
Anything else, Caitlin, Caitlin's been really good coming up with this, is there anything else that you have to add there?
Something to think about is, the Joe Miller thing he brought up yesterday was, do we have impact fees paid at the secondary class approval? Or do we wait until we're issuing each building?
So that, yeah, that has some blessings and minuses, if we do it at second class, we're getting our money upfront, right? That's a plus. But if we have, all of a sudden, we have a slowdown, like we had the subdivisions of Falls, that was flat in 2008, now it's 70s. Four, 12 years later, they're actually building, our impact fee. Which we did upfront, could have been 8,500, but now, you know, 12 years in future, it may be 20,000. So can we do vote? Oh, break it, break it up, like half now, half later, I don't know.
Or would we have to stick to one method for say five years, and then wait for that five?
No, yeah, no, I'm just.
We'd be great with that.
Yeah. Is there a rule about if the impact fee is over $5,000, that you can pay in installments?
I think there is something like that, I've read that, yes.
That's another option.
What I've learned, not 100% on this. Participation, but impact fees, if someone's gonna build a 3,000 or $300,000 home. $9,000 worth of impact fee, they won't keep that, build that 300,000, that's gonna be part of the cost. If you take our impact fees, and take connect fees, water, electricity. You're, you're talking, what's the, what, 15?
Well, if we run with nine, we'll say 9,000, and then. System development, three years, 2,000 plus 6, so that's 36, so about it. 12, 6. Falker gives. 3,000, so we're at 16, almost 17, and then the tap and cap for, for collecting water. So we're at 20,000. Yeah, for everything, yeah, but if they got 20, you're probably gonna build that house. Over 30 years, I mean. Yeah, 55,000. If you're drawing like 20, 20,000 over 360 months. Oh, so you're gonna, yeah, yeah, not a year.
Right.
Yeah, yep, that's not gonna stop me from building on that. And I will tell you this, just from my standpoint, I wouldn't give a bad eye to anything, less than 10,000 on this, or less than 10,000.
I think that's something I have to really consider. Because there could be a slowdown, I, I don't think there will be, but if there is, then, a good example is Hudson Farms. That's been set back for, yeah, what, 15 years, and they're just now building, and we can get our. Each lot money, I mean, we can get it upfront, I, I'm not gonna call that out, but I think we need to really. Look at that hard. And we may make a mistake, I mean. Building houses and lots, some of the regions, they're always. Right, Scott? Any more questions, Caitlin?
No, I think the, the conversation.
Yep, Bob, you got anything?
I think it's a good piece of work, I think we're going in a good direction, because I mean, you mentioned chat growth through the west of us. I assume that's probably how they're paying for the, for the infrastructure work that they're doing. So again, they're getting a lot of growth, so I think we, it's a good track to take.
Any other complimentary questions?
Next meeting for, for July the 8th, and this will be on the agenda there, so. Thank you, reading the jury.
Okay, thanks.